Or. I call this committee the whole meeting to order. We respect and recognize the First Nations within whose unsealed lands the village of Caslow is situated, including the Tanaa, tonight's and the Sillits people, and the indigenous and native residents of our community. So we're called to order and we have no late items, so can have a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. So moved by Council Brown, seconded by Council Lang. Oh, addition of an in camera?
Yep.
Okay. So, sorry. All right, so that the agenda for the January thirteenth committee of the whole meeting be adopted as amended to include an in camera session. And that in accord, um, in accordance with section ninety-one A of the All right, so as amended, Council Brown and Council Lang, any discussion? Call those in favor? And we've received several letters, uh, of correspondence, um, so they're all part of the package. And thank you for everyone who's taking the time to, to write to us. And it is available in, in tonight's package. So if you wish to, to read that, we're not going to be able to pull any of them out, but just so that you know that council has received it. And, um, and has reviewed it. So we'll move into our delegation. So we've got four of them this evening. Our first delegation is the South Beach Working Group. And, uh, ten minutes for your presentation and then council can ask you questions, which doesn't, it isn't part of your ten minutes. So you can sit at the table, Don.
Thank you, Mayor. You're welcome, Council, for giving us this opportunity. Actually, you haven't given us the last one, so thank you. Um, I've slightly reduced the size of my reading for the presentation that you have got copies of. But I've kept in all the important information and little pittos trapped pretty closely. The South Beach Working Group is Lauren Douglas, Tim Holland, Linda Lynch, Emily Mattis, Russell Precious, Tom Robinson, myself, Donald Scarlett. I'm a retired professional engineer and I've worked and volunteered for community organizations in Caslow for more than fifty-two years. We're concerned about the social and legal impact of the strata RV park development proposed to be built on flatland at South Beach. We have sounded public opinion and we researched municipal law to determine whether the village of Caslow has been acting legally and in the public interest as it prepares to approve the strategy to the Strata RV Park. The Strata RV Park proposal was first introduced to the public of Caslow on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, open house at the Caslow region. The same event featured a proposal to sell village land to the developer so that he would own enough land to build the Strata RV Park development. This deal, so-called land swap, has never publicly at least had any other purpose. The village of Caslow updated its official community plan, which we call OCP for short, in twenty twenty-two. An OCP has legal priority over the use of public land. The government of B C website says, number one, an OCP may impose restrictions on the use of land that is environmentally sensitive to development. And number two, it said also that an OCP may contain policies relating to the preservation, protection, restoration, and enhancement of the natural environment, its ecosystems, and biological diversity. Since the open house more than a year ago, the developer in the village have acted as though the proposed development would follow the rules in the village of Caslow OCP. We have read the OCP very carefully and we learned underlines. On December ninth, twenty twenty-four, the South Beach Working Group notified the village of Caslow by letter that section sixteen point four in the OCP designates a lakefront protection development permit area, what we'll call it a DPA, with a specific guideline in section sixteen point four point three, paragraph four, that states development in the DPA shall be limited to passive recreational amenities such as walking and multi-use trails, natural parks areas, non-motorized pleasure craft launches and park benches. Period. Doesn't talk about other types of developments being allowed in that particular area. The OCP contains maps C and F, which I, you all have copies of, and C is the maybe a pile on its own, but I think, and F likewise. These are maps straight out of the OCP. They're part of our submission. They show that the lakefront protection DPA covers most of South Beach, including three quarters of the proposed Strata RV Park. Maps C and F are small scale though, and don't show topography, so we engaged the services of Marie Hange, Hornier Beck, principal of vivid geographic consultants, mapping and consulting firm with many years of experience for the village of Caslow and helping. Marie Hange overlaid data from the OCP map F on a scaled map of South Beach with high resolution, light art elevation lines to create the South Beach OCP protection areas map, which is also included in our paper, this next one. And this is an important one to keep in mind. And the important thing about her doing this is that she made sure the scale would stay the same. So this is a map that has uh, important reliability that for, uh, nearly just was intended by the OCP for the South Beach. On that map, the lakefront protection DPA has a yellow boundary shaded with yellow hatching that covers seventy-five percent of the area that was originally proposed for the Strata RV Park. For reference, we've provided the preliminary RV park layout drawing, which is another one in the in the list, only seen before. It just shows how, how much earlier the Strata RV proposal originally would have required. And I think the, there's a dark triangle, uh, shown on the lakefront protection, uh, EPA map. Uh, the, the one that, uh, Marie Hange produced, uh, has the yellows cross lines on it and so on. I think there's a, a dark triangle on that as well. It shows the same area that gives that the RV park is supposed to be popular. The South, South Beach OCP protection areas now show, that's the one that Marie Hange made, shows that there is no other developable land available in the Strata RV Park. That is other than that little area in the upper right-hand corner of the, uh, crosshatch area. That is flat, and developable means flatland that you can actually do something with, because the steep hill behind which is too steep to go. And the line or lines show that as well. The liner elevation lines show the lakefront protection DPA was based on a high water line in the northern section, and it follows the base of the steep hillside on the west side of South Beach. Map C from the OCP also shows that the underwater portion of the six point five acre development developer bond lot at the south end of South Beach and the western part of the large mostly underwater district of nine nine six southeast of South Beach are also included in the lakefront protection DPA. Section sixteen point four point two of the OCP includes regulation of underwater development, including floating structures, docks, boat houses, and moors, which means that development restrictions of the OCP also apply to the waters of the lake. Besides removing seventy-five percent of the area proposed for the Strata RV Park, the lakefront protection development area also prohibits any motorized boat ramp, as well as any associated access rotor, along with any foreseeable warrants for boat houses that the developer may have had in mind. The point is, point of all this is that an OCP carries legal weight and may restrict zoning and development. The village of Caslow bylaw one two eight three adopted January tenth, twenty twenty-three establishes procedures for development applications and states in, states in section five point four, quote, where the OCP specifies certain guidelines and procedures for development permanent applications, such requirements shall take precedence over the requirements of the bylaw. In cases where the B C municipalities have attempted to make development decisions contrary to their OCPs, the terms and requirements of the OCP have been upheld in court. A legal brief by Stuart McAdams Stewart, specialist in municipal law, states, quote, "It is essential that local governments which have created development permanent areas in their OCP pursuant to the local government act take care to issue and decline development permits according to the guidelines they have acted in their OCP." We're going to conclude with some points in the forward dialogue summary points. Number one, the Strata RV Park development proposal explicitly contravenes, contravenes the guidelines in section sixteen point four point three, paragraph four of the OCP because its proposed RV park paths and infrastructure approach deeply into the lakefront protection DPA where they are not allowed. Number two, although camping was inserted last December seventeenth into the description of the proposed development bylaw one two nine eight, the bylaw still contravenes the OCP guidelines because it allows, quote, accessory buildings and structures, a caretaker residence, a boat launch and response that's not restricted to being non-motorized, outdoor storage and hookups to, for common order and septic, and presumably electricity as well. None of those developments are permitted within the lakefront protection DPA. The map supplied by C T Q Consultants for inclusion has Schedule A in bylaw one two nine eight dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four shows the developer persists in developing, in, excuse me, in requesting rezoning for the Strata RV Park in areas where it is not permitted by the lakefront protection DPA. Number four, since the developable land shown on the South Beach OCP protection areas map amounts to only twenty-five percent of the area originally contemplated, the Strata RV Park development presented thirteen months ago would never have been legally allowed anywhere in South Beach. Is that one in a minute? Um, I didn't stop, and I guess got a little bit more of it, but I'll be very quick. Um, amending, number five, amending the village of Caslow OCP, OCP is not an option because it cannot be amended without a proper process. Number six, the proposed land swap, which was based on and justified to the public by the November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three Strata RV Park development proposal, never had a legal purpose at all. If the council were to approve the land swap without a viable and legal development to justify it, the public would view it as providing a financial benefit to a non-resident land developer under false pretenses. We thank the village of Caslow for, council for choosing on December seventeenth to defer approval of bylaw one two nine eight due to public concern and presented evidence. However, we heard a troubling suggestion that the land swap proposal placed before the public in November twenty twenty-three might nevertheless be implemented regardless of the illegality and failure of the Strata RV Park proposal. It's, the South Beach Working Group has done its research and has provided this brief to help the village council avoid legal action and to preserve the long-term interest of the village of Caslow and its citizens. From the final verdict, please don't say words. Thank you very much. I appreciate the patience.
Okay, Don, do you want to just wait there in case there's questions from council? Are there any questions from council?
Uh, Councilor.
Yep, through the chair, um, Ms. Scarlett, um, I'm just not sure what this line is, and I realize that I probably need
Yeah, I can explain that.
Ground federal unknown?
Well, the, um, there's an area shown in the lake, this has a fringe line running around it. Uh, that's what we refer to as, um, District block nine nine six, uh, and I mentioned it, where it's been completed by there. And that's underwater land, which is presently not owned by anybody. It's crown land. Um, but, uh, it, part of it is included in the, um, in the section sixteen point four two of the OCP. Uh, it's, it's regulation on things that can go underwater. So it's a little unclear whether the entire area is restricted that way or just part of it. Uh, because the mapping from the OCP never did show in the water very much. It did show on map C, does actually show some of the, um, uh, lakefront relevant permanent area protection DPA. Uh, some of that is actually underwater. If you look at map C, you see some of it lapses in the, in the league. So there is obviously some power of the OCP to regulate what goes on underwater.
Any questions for Don? Uh, Councilor Brown?
Uh, through the chair. When I look at this document, um, the yellow areas referred to as waterfront DPA, whereas when I look at map C, um, that same area is designated by the green crosshatching.
And so, see. I've seen, shows it as green.
And so there it's referred to as the lakefront protection DPA. So are the lakefront protection DPA and the waterfront protection DPA identical? Or, and are they marked properly on these two documents?
So lakefront protection DPA is the area that we're referring to, and you'll notice it does actually intrude on the lake to a certain extent on the, on the southeast side. Because some is underwater, but, um, uh, the rules that the, um, OCP declares for the lakefront protection DPA apply to that green crosshatch area.
Through the chair, um, you'll notice that in our OCP mapping, those same areas that we're talking about, on map F, it's called a waterfront protection DPA, and on map C, the same area, it's called lakefront protection DPA.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd say to the audience to say that, um, we never found any other reference in the OCP or the waterfront protection area. It's only referred to as a lakefront, and I believe this that that was a symbol, I hope.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
All right, our next delegation is from town Mallet. Come up to the table, Anne. Vander Six, your choice?
I'm Venus Bay, and Catherine's going for the Dallas month's line.
Yeah, let me just, uh, get the share working on that, too.
Ten, ten minutes, and we won't start until we've got your presentation up on the screen.
Give me just a second. I think I'm doing this in the right order. Yep. Okay, I'm gonna just bring that up to
So the presentation is different than the documents that we have in the rap documents. You have a whole package, and my script is portions of it. Mayor Hewitt and councilors. The movement not familiar with the term OCP. When I speak of the OCP, I'm talking of council's official community plan. Our first OCP was enacted in twenty ten, the most recent in twenty twenty-two. This evening, I'm speaking to you from the perspective of a resident who attended OCP review steering committee meetings held during twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. So I'm going to focus on a few issues from the package that I submitted to council. There's a new waterfront development area in our OCP. This land use map depicts the waterfront development area in Grand. It's not just the South Beach property that's accepted. In twenty eleven, Caslow Bay was registered as a historic place. Was the historical society consulted on the effect of waterfront development area adjacent to Caslow Bay Park, the town? During the OCP review process, Caslow had a very active client action group. When they consulted on the impact of an RV park, when other property owners consulted, this waterfront development area was a major change to our OCP. That one? One week after the OCP was enacted, a rezoning application was considered. I've highlighted two paragraphs there. Ah, the village has land holdings. During the OCP rewrite, when was this information shared with public? The proposed use is compatible with the OCP. When was the public informed of this proposed use during our OCP review? There are paragraphs in the waterfront development area section that appear to enable its outreach proposal. Was the developer the only person consulted? The South Beach proposal also includes a housing component, and it's depicted in yellow on this zoning map. Was the housing society consulted for creative ideas such as inclusionary zoning? This is one of the policies in the waterfront development area section of our OCP. Limit development to passive recreational uses. Look up the definition of passive recreational uses. And these are some of the phrases you'll find. Minimal impact, non-motorized, minimal alteration. And then, yep, there you go. Now I have to ask, how is an RV park compatible with passive recreational uses? The kayak on the beach also demonstrates that you don't need a boat launch for a non-motorized pleasure craft. This is from a staff report, uh, the table letter, the seventy-seventeenth meeting. The developer is not permitted to construct its RV park or motorized boat launch within the DPA. This statement was challenged by the performance representative at council's special meeting. A legal opinion is in order. So where is this lakefront protection development permit area? This I consider to be the most accurate map. It's the original OCT development permit area map. And you'll notice that we have two lakefront development permit areas. Lakefront from the village's northern boundary to the Moy property line on the west side. And lakefront protection from the Moy property line to the village's southern boundary. This map also shows the stream protection. And note that the South Beach property since twenty-ten has been in the lakefront protection DPA. Zoom in to the subject property and the situation becomes clearer. And what do you see when this original map is overlaid on the C T Q park and camping zones map? Well, it's clearly evident that a very large portion of the South Beach property lies within lakefront protection development permit area. Our OCP has incorporated the values Castle residents cherish in regard to Coopie Lake and Castle River for more than a decade. Fourteen years ago, there was tremendous engagement with the public as Castle's first official community plan was debated within the community. The same sentiments were forthcoming when the public was involved in shaping the sustainability strategy for the village in twenty fourteen. In twenty fifteen, Caslow's lakefront protection development permit area policies and guidelines were used as examples in this Columbia Basin Trust Resource Guide. And these are, quote, from the Caslow Land's Investment Attraction Program prepared by C T Q consultants. Yes, the consultants who today are representing the developer. They told council in twenty eighteen that lakefront locations warn protection as public assets. Once again, in November twenty twenty-one, when asked, what do you found the most about Castle today that you think should be reported in the official community plan? The single largest response was natural beauty. Given the changes in the OCP that have impacted Castle's most significant assets that we talk about in our OCP, public engagement was inadequate. Our OCP contains another exception. It's titled Beyond the Boundary and Towards Reconciliation. At least two sites within the municipality of Caslow adjacent to Coopie Lake are included on the provincial heritage register as archaeology sites. Both sites hold valuable cultural and spiritual value because First Nations visited this place before European settlers came in. May through June, locals have fished at the Mount Caslow River for decades. Late temperatures are warming, insects are hatching, and dollygarden trout are feeding. It does not take much to imagine that indigenous peoples fished here first and possibly camped on South Beach. Castle Council, your decision will affect generations to come. Castle Council, it's time to walk the talk in our OCP. Thank you. Anything else? Um, I will, I will insert a fun fact. Our first OCP was in nineteen eighty-five. The two thousand and eleven one was replacing that. Uh, any questions, Fran?
Through the chair. Um, and it's not really a question, but I just want to thank you for clarifying for me, because I was on the committee as well. And I had, uh, the same, obviously, the same questions, and, uh, your, your notes that you kept are better than the ones that I kept. I appreciate you, uh, being able to pull all that forward, because what I had, but some expired links and a lot of questions.
Anything else? Great. Thanks again, Anne. All right, Bill. You can move the chair around to wherever you are most comfortable.
And I hope, I hope my little voice carries a bit.
Well, you're right in front of the microphone, so you should be fine. It's more of a concern for people online.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Mayor. And council members, staff? And attendees? I'm Bill Wells. I understand that you already have received a lot of information about this matter. I want to address the hazards of the lake and the river in relation to the proposed amendment to the official community plan for the South Beach. I think the area deemed as the development permit area should be allowed to be a beach with very limited, non-permanent, and only appropriate development community as permitted in the OCP. There are reasons to reclassify the property to rationalize the legacy tiny lots and the unlisted village space. But is this the best way to go about it? The highest and best use of the beach property of a property that is not permanent, the highest and best use of the beach property area of the property is not permanent RV pads that are serviced by septic and electrical facilities. I urge you to reject, reject this amendment proposal. But first, I submitted a fairly lengthy write-up to you in preparation for this meeting. There's, afterwards, I guess, if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to, I answer them. I live in the southwest corner of the village, and I've lived in the Noricuti Lake Valley for fifty-five years. I came here in 1969 with some job which created a degree in geology and soil science. But the reason I came was to help rebuild my sister's house that I had burnt in the cold winter of nineteen sixty-eight and sixty-nine at the head of the lake in Argentina. Besides Martha Tree, I did farm labor and I worked for some longer in a choker's center. I lived here and I made arrangements to do it. I believe I have the relevant local experience and knowledge. Thank you for the observations I'm making here. In nineteen seventy-one, my own house burned down. To get the materials to rebuild, I went into the solvent business with my brother-in-law. The nanny made an sole river ties to KNH for the contract, the CPR. We loaded them out and underdoged the lawn cars here in the bank so that they could be lodged onto their next step when they're keeping them. This and just living in the area led to an interest in forest duty. In the late nineteen seventies, I was hired to work in BC's program to classify and map the pockets of ecosystem. I dug soil pits and discovered a lot of soil equip lines over southeast EC in the Nelson Forest region from Big Bend, the U.S. border, and Panama, the summit, to Alberta. This led to a career in terrain analysis and hazard mapping. I and my associates studied and mapped this area for the ministry of forests, the community forests, EC timber sales, local forest products, little like four ninety-four, and classing the cop lumber over the years since the early nineteen eighties. As I wrote to my submission, there are two main sources of floods in the South Beach. The periodic rises of lake level and flash floods and surges from the river. The Castle River and some of its larger tributaries are subject to flooding caused by atmospheric rivers that fall into the basin and from upstream vortices from landslides, avalanches, and debris, debris dams. The subsequent failure of these will cause surges and flash flooding, unpredictable, at almost many times in the years. Flooding also occurs from runoff of rain from hydrophobic or cooked soils and forest layers because the moisture just can't be absorbed. There have been some notable outbreaks in recent years in EC with this problem. The shoreline flooding of the Castle shoreline can occur from events quite distant from Castle caused by the flooding in tributary rivers or from containment of water behind dams that control the Coopie Lake levels of the Columbia River Treaty. The definition of current, the definition of the current safe-to-build-above mark of about five hundred and thirty-one meters is unrealistic. This is the average or middle of April to July lake levels in normal years, whatever they are. However, the variations from April to July can be over two meters or over six feet. I believe that the council was able to determine via the development permit process that the high water mark for purposes of development is at least five hundred and thirty-four meters. I understand that Castle has already agreed to five hundred and thirty-five meters as a critical level in association with the Coopie Lake partnership. These are all well illustrated and at least mapped by Marie Horsch pointing back to the South Pacific Beach working here. Future flooding of South Beach on conglent levels is certain. Permanent facilities such as sewage facilities and utility lines should not be on this beach. Now, today, an angle made in today in January, according to four issues of EC dating autumn a level of level is above five hundred and thirty-one point three five meters, trending down. Coopie Lake level has risen above five hundred and thirty-four meters eleven times since nineteen seventy-four. Seven of those floods have been in the last ten years. Seven in the last ten years, over five hundred and thirty-four meters. Global climate has changed such that weather is subject to more extreme behavior. Events of extreme precipitation or treat or heat are far more frequent and less predictable than in decades past. Many devastating weather-related events have occurred around here in just the past twenty years. Several graphic, graphics that illustrated some of those occasions, I put that in the submission. Others have too. Except for situations different than means, the highest and best use for a beach subject to repeated flooding is to be a beach. Repeated flooding from high water levels is assured and is even acknowledged by the landlord to be an ongoing hazard. Seeking this amendment to the OCP for an RV park is quite pathetic to me. It is a formula for a mess and expensive cleanup cost. The councilers believe such an installation is the highest and best used of this site. Now I want to talk about risks and hazards. I talked about that in my submission. And I hope my explanation about the relationship of risks to hazards is understandable. As I mentioned, risk is a term used to describe the level of probability that a consequence will occur as a result of a hazard. This is what insurers and developers may be most interested in concerning. In my submission, I wrote about other hazards upstream in the river, but here I'm going to only focus on the South Beach. Risk to the South Beach from floods either from the river or the lake depend on the value attached to the area and whatever investments or developments have been made. We know the hazard of flooding from high lake, lake levels is high. Floods will occur repeatedly in the future. Lights, earth groups, and other fortifications have been installed along the river in places, including the South Bank between North entry gate to the property at the lake. These reduce the hazard. The discharges do not prevent the inevitable future event that will pass by. The risk to property will depend on the value of any developer on the, on the natural riparian area. In my opinion, the highest and best use of a riparian area has to be part of the riverbed. I will conclude by joining others to say that the approval of this proposed amendment that provides for our RV park on the South Beach seems to be in opposition to an explicit of the original intent at work, the community plan that was ten years in the making and had much community support when it finally was completed.
Thank you, Bill.
That brings for Bill. Through the chair. I'm not quite sure the term you used, but it was basically okay to build at five thirty-one meters.
No, yeah, so the developer says there's established a line, which is, they say, hydro says it's good to be okay to build from around here. That's around five hundred and thirty-one meters.
Okay, so.
They have to build back from that line. They sort of ignore the, the overall permit area department. It just said, that's okay to build back from that line at saying five hundred and thirty-one meters.
I was wondering where they got it from. They're telling me it's hydro, so like Coopie Lake levels.
That's where they said they got it from.
You know that? Yeah, no, I mean, do you have any other, I'm sorry.
Well, I think it's a good question because it's a very arbitrary line. Because if you look on the ground, the border's bad. The difference between elevation of the lake in April and what it is in July is fifty-six meters difference. I mean, six feet's difference. The hydro is just saying because, because all property was around the lake have just gotten actually took up more land, just got a little bit of an increment because somebody thought the high water mark was too, too far to the lake. So it just got a little land. I mean, it was too far to the uphill where the old high water mark was decided it was too high up. So all around the lake, property, the lakefront property here is just out of the limit. But they shouldn't have because it's based on this notion that some arbitrary line between April and July is the whole place, that's what we're going to say, is the whole place to save the stadium for developers putting your house in. And this is not just for the villages, it's for the whole lake. And that's how, that's what I think that they're saying in their proposal. Is that true? I think that's.
It's puzzling, but it's clear.
It is confusing and it doesn't make any sense.
To the chair, did you say that the Coopie Lake partnership was the one that that set the level of the lake, the high water mark?
According to the level, the Coopie Lake flooding study.
Thank you.
I'm going to put that in my submission.
Thank you, Bill. Where's Erudation? Jim Paul.
Thank you. Well, Dallas, I'm going to talk about two maps that I'll reference. One is the one that you've all seen from, well, you've seen them both now. Some of the stuff, I wasn't fully able to see what everybody can say, so maybe I'll try to jump around all of these stuff. There's this map, this map that you've seen, and I think you understand now there's a black, faint black line drawn there that was basically represented. Jim Paul, I live two blocks beyond municipal boundary in Area D. I've lived there for four, six years and have been active in the community, NPOs for about four years. I've served on this council for over ten years. The last fifteen years or so I've been, I had a view of the South Beach area. And when I heard of the proposed development, I was very interested in following it. I support the notion that the property has more greater value, has much greater value in the public domain than has a stratotidal RV park. This is because the property is largely covered by land that is in the flood plain, subject to high velocity free flows. And it's also a contaminated flood. Since the industrial use was suspended about four years ago, Mother Nature has done a magic and has created a magnificent natural area that is undeniable anywhere on the land body of Coopie Lake. It is very unique and special. And the status of this property begs for an analysis for the highest investigation. Now that I've closely studied this council, it's clear to me that the development process is not in line with the OCP, our village bylaws, and provincial legislation. So that's where I was going to show you the maps. But we talked about that pretty much deal across to, Eric, you understand that? Black New Town Development Act. A little careful measurement on this map reveals that seventy-five percent of proposed development lies within the lake shore protection development permit area. I'll script here a bit. I think some of the confusion around here rests with, when people look at this, I understand that the village has acknowledged that none of this can happen inside this yellow-sliced area. But this is the proposal, so you can't accept seventy-five percent of this proposal. You can't accept this in no way. I think there are, I think there's some confusion, confusion of public policy. A primary concern, I'd like to state that the entire basis for selling and trading village property, erasing plotting lines, canceling road allowances, and re-subdividing South Beach property is to facilitate this development. Which is a stratotidal RV park, but which should be clear, seventy-five percent is situated inside the lake shore burn permit area. It's very apparent that development is specifically not allowed above the village OCP and Local Government Act of EC. The permitted uses of the lake, we've been over that, as I mentioned a couple of times, let's skip that. You guys know where they are. In the village OCP regulation or section sixteen, four, two, page forty-three, regulated development states, this is, this is really one of the main points of mine presentation. Within the lakefront protection DPA, no change of land use, no subdivision, or site alteration is allowed without a development permit. Pretty straightforward. I maintain that creating a new land use designation of C four commercial recreation, RV camping, to replace the current zoning M one industrial is a change of land use, not allowed. And that the amalgamation of the property and creating new subdivision are not allowed without a development permit, which villagers might see as soggy. Village currently has recommendations from staff to finalize the land swap trade deal and amend by law eleven thirty to facilitate QP developments proposal. The proposed development can't be done without village property. The entire development covers an area that is thirty to forty percent village-owned property. The proposed development involves canceling roadways, erasing current plotting, and creating a new subdivision for all the property in this area. So why is this proposal still being pushed forward when it's still apparent that it is not conforming to the OCP by law eleven thirty and the Local Government Act of EC? The answer is that the development permit application has not been made by the developer, which, and that's in conjunction with the OCP. My personal opinion is that the developer can't change his mind and say, oh, I'm only going to do twenty-five percent. This, this passes on, on the way up, yes or no? As I've indicated, the local government is very clear in managing development development permit areas. Brief exemption are taken briefly from the Local Government Act, Part fourteen, Division seventeen, development permits. Activities that require a development permit. That's section four eight nine. If an official community plan designates development permit areas, the following prohibitions apply under this division without a development permit. Land within the area must not be subdivided. Land use within the area must not be changed. And no site operations within the area can be done. That's the Local Government Act. For the Development Permits General Authority, section four ninety, states that a development permit must not vary a flood plain specification. If the village proceeds with the land swap trade deal without receiving the processing development permit, this will in effect amount to a perceived approval of the project for QP developments, could lead to legal exposure by misrepresenting a possible, causal outcome of the proposal. It will definitely lead to reporting to the local government reporting the Local Government Act deviation to the Minister of Municipal Protection or legal action by the residents of Castle. What is probably even worse is the land deal will be done and it can't be undone. And the village will have lost all value, interest, and influence on the future development of South Beach on behalf of the residents of Castle. It should be noted that the value of the land holdings after a proposed land trade swap for the village will nominally increase triple. The value will triple for the South Beach properties, and that's according to the land appraisal done by the developer. This is a huge cast windfall for the developer and it makes me wonder if this possibly the reason for this I don't want to call it ill-advised proposal. It should be noted, I'm sorry. In conclusion, I started the OCP in the relevant sections of the Local Government Act. I find that the Castle OCP is an excellent document that adheres to the Local Government Act really well. There are sections of the OCP that could definitely be further developed, be more in line with the Local Government Act. Within the context of the regulations, the following would be prudent actions on the part of the village councilor. The village is required to request a development permit application from QP developments. I would suggest that since the village has the parameters of the QP development proposal already, it might be wise to save a lot of time and expense on the development permit application process and make a preliminary evaluation for the viability of this current proposal. The village certainly should abandon all negotiations on sale, trade, subdivision, and amalgamation of properties until there is a development permit approved. Further, the village needs to drop consideration of amending by law twelve ninety-eight until there is an approval of the, of the development permit. Hopefully, council appreciates the broad enthusiastic participation and interest of residents concerning the disposition of the land in South Beach properties and embrace and support that participation moving forward with development options. It is rare, and is continually a goal of all local governments to have active and engaged participation in their communities. It is rare, and is continually a goal of all local governments, to have active and engaged participation in their communities. Don't pass up on this opportunity, you got it, interesting. Conservation of natural spaces is broadly supported in the OCP, and there's no village property higher in environmental values than the South Beach.
So you referenced, um, all we got in our package was a map, do you have a copy of that presentation that could be shared?
You could have this. This kind of, you know, it's kind of my short end of the story.
Right, are there any questions for you?
Through the Chair, um, so you're stating that, if I understand you correctly, um, that we could not change the zoning in that area where we don't want to change to park and recreation, where we want to change it to commercial, and in any, you know, to be able to enable a campground and an RV park, what you're, what you're suggesting is that no change of zoning in any way would be permitted in that area, even were?
Without, without a development permit. So the development permit would, this, this would be locked down, like right now, and I, you know, your CAO's going to know a lot more about this than me, so I'm not the authority here, but the way I understand is, this, this, this is a proposal that he sent in, a development permit is not an applicable, I don't know how binding this is, but I believe that a development permit could bind this. So probably, I would suggest that, at this point, the developer has the opportunity to reject this, to get more in line with, so that it's something that at least, you know, for the value of what the community sees, this doesn't look good. Doesn't good to, you know, to draw a line across it, the whole thing's gotta go. And, and so in that point is more to having credible things with her for, not for the public. I don't know if I answered your question, Rob Rock.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilor Lewis, to the Chair, this is actually a question for the CAO. At what part in a process like this, a proposal, would you put in a DPA? Would this owner and the developer put in a DPA?
Development's current application would be received. But not as part of this process, they would already own the land, it would already be rezoned, and they would be moving towards obstruction, so it's not, typically it's not part of the process, other than um, over the last month, we've in effect asked the developer to go back and take a look at this proposal to see um, if they have any other thoughts on whether the OCP permits their RV park to proceed in pursuit of legal opinion, and the village would provide more information to council. So.
Just to clarify something, you had mentioned something about um, QP as the land appraised.
Uh, on the, with the proposal, I'm not sure if it's QP or, yeah, that's, I, I thought that's.
But I thought that we had hired an independent appraiser.
I thought that was done by the developer, huh, done by the village?
The Chair, the appraisal was performed by an unbiased third party that was selected by the village and the developer cooperatively to provide a appraisal that we both could have confidence in.
Any other questions for you? All right, thank you very much. So that brings us to a bunch of questions, and what I'm going to suggest is, uh, and this takes all of council to agree, is um, we'll give up to thirty minutes for questions, and to a maximum of ten people. I will take five online, well, um, yeah, we'll go, start with five online and five in the room, and um, knowing that we have got eighty-five participants online, I might, I might change that, so um, if you could give Catherine your, um, so those who are online, if you could send a message through chat.
Yeah, or put their hands up.
Or put your hand up, but we won't know who put their hand up first. So if you, but it does take unanimous consent, and what I'm going to say is, please, 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 to respect all of those who may wish to ask a question. Be cognizant of the questions that have been asked already and answered. Um, don't repeat, because that just means that less people get to ask new questions, so if you're able, if you're asking something new, by all means, please ask something new, so um, but if your first words out of your mouth are, I'm going to be blunt, I agree with what somebody else has already said, then please just say my question was asked and answered, and then that gives somebody else an opportunity. Um, but this will take a motion of unanimous consent of council, so um, yes. To the Chair, I just want to clarify the types of questions, because a lot of questions, we really don't have the information to answer, like questions about whether or not we're interpreting the OCP. I agree that we do need to have some kind of legal opinion, and even question about the development permit application. I don't feel like we have enough information to answer those questions, so, you know, as long as there are questions that we can answer, that are, you know, we have information like about land sale agreements or something, but many questions, I feel like we don't have the information to answer. Thank you, Councilor Lewis, um, so, and have a motion to extend question here to thirty minutes, so Councilor Bird and Councilor Brown, so all those in favor? Okay, that motion is clear. All right, so we'll have Catherine put together a list. And ideally, it would be people who haven't already spoken as yet.
We just got the two in the room, you want to start?
Okay. Okay, so we've got two in the room, so we'll take up to eight uh, online, so we'll let Catherine, so we'll, we'll start with Jesse.
Thank you, Councilor, the councilors, I'm here, Hewitt, CAO, um, this is a very sincere question, I, I would love to hear the answer if you have it, and I understand if you can't answer it fully. Um, the basics, and I have a little more to add, is just, I would like to understand why you would hope that this development would go through. I think our whole community wants to know, why is it that council is appearing to be moving this forward? Um, so, you know, I made some assumptions, because I haven't gotten a clear answer about that, that, well, maybe it's financial. But then I learned at the December seventeenth meeting that no financial assessment has been done, so I thought, well, that clearly can't be the reason, that's a financial benefit to the community, because I guess we don't know that yet. And my next assumption was that maybe the council thought that an RV park would be good for our community, you know, tourism, whatever, who knows what? Um, but I also learned, you know, the CAO mentioned several times at the last meeting that um, we don't have to have, forgive me if this is not in the right language, but I think what Jim Hall was referring to, you know, that we don't have to have this DPA, we don't have to know exactly what they're going to do with the land, we can just move forward with the land transfer, and then we'll have some say in what they do, and we'll deal with that later. Well, I, you know, I'm thinking as a community member, like, gosh, why, I think as Jamie said, this is an incredibly valuable asset, once it's made a whole piece of land, why would we possibly make that move without knowing exactly what they're going to do with that land, and exactly how they're going to do, do that, and make sure it's feasible? You know, we've heard tonight, there's lots of reasons why, holy cow, it really may not even be feasible, what they're telling you they're going to do. So I'm getting new information just tonight, and my question is, um, you know, to you and the CAO, it appeared last time that there was some urgency, some inclination to just move forward with the land transfer, get that part done, and worry about the rest later. Is there, and this is a question I think the public really needs to know, is there an incentive on the, on, on all of your parts to move forward with this land transfer, and if there is, what is that incentive, what are your goals, what are the benefits to moving forward? So that we can understand as a public, how we assess those as offsetting the downsides that we're now bringing to light?
All right, so if you can refrain from that, please, um, I know you're in support and that's why you're here, um, we have an obligation, uh, QP Developments is a taxpayer, so we have an obligation to entertain his proposal. By no means is that mean that any of us is in support or opposed, we have the obligation to hear it, the same as we would have the obligation if anyone came forward with a proposal with what to do with their property, we can't just say, no, we don't like you, we don't like it, and this is, we don't want this to happen. We have to do our due diligence, and this is part of it, I mean, um, the land transfer is part of that, and at any time um, during this, uh, if the back and forth between the, the council and, and the developer, that they decide that it's not feasible for them to go forward, or we can't, they can't meet conditions that we've each set, it, it can stop at any time, but we couldn't just reject the proposal outright. That it's our job to, to entertain it.
Am I allowed to speak?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it really seemed to our whole community, I think, that had this South Beach working group not stepped in, and the public not stepped in and said, hey, wait a minute, it, it seemed there was some eagerness to move forward, that you were gonna do the land transfer, that the CAO seemed very interested in that happening even last meeting, am I wrong about that?
We're working our way through a process.
Yeah.
And um, we're, you know, to, to talk publicly, because we're giving, we're giving you information as well as, as the developer, some things you have to stay in camera, because it could uh, damage the position of the village. There is, there's a reason for items to be addressed in camera.
I don't quite understand what you're.
Well, uh, negotiations are typically, you know, you, the uh, public has been given the information on the assessment of the land, and um, it's a negotiation, we, what we can put in the public has been put in the public, but there are still certain elements of the whole uh, proposal that do, because they're, they involve legal. Um, so, can we move on to the next question, Steve? And um, did we have anyone online?
Um, I am not having any, but getting the chat to come up, and I don't see anyone.
Any hands? You can do the virtual raising of a hand or an actual, but there's several pages, so um, okay, I do see Celia Cheatley in chat, in virtually with a hand up, so Celia.
Uh, thank you, I'd be interested to know what the conditions are on the sale from the side of the village.
So they were part of the, uh, the package from the last meeting, there were quite a number of them. Um, I don't have them on hand, um, but they were part of the package from the last meeting.
I'm sorry then that I missed, uh, I must have forgotten that or missed reading it, but do they account for things like if the septic couldn't tolerate the level of development that's being proposed, it would stop the sale? Do they account for that kind of thing?
Greg Hewitt, and uh, Ms. Cheatley. So the conditions that were in the staff report that council reviewed on December seventeenth include a land survey that withstands the scrutiny, scrutiny of the village, including where's the location of the natural boundary, and independent third party that calculates the land transfer area, that the village receives fair compensation of the net land transfer, and the, based on the appraiser's estimated far, fair market value, that stream and lake protection setback areas become public land, that you developer conduct an archaeological, environmental flood hazard, and sewage disposal dispersal assessment, which I believe touches on part of your question, and that the village then scrutinize in more detail those reports, and require their developer to abide by any of the recommendations. Also, the developer would be required to comply with the Environmental Management Act Contaminated Sites Regulation. They would, or the village would issue a notice to adopt a road closure bylaw, as well as notice of disposition of road allowances. The public would then have an opportunity to provide input for council's consideration, once those notices are issued. Bear with me, there's five more. There would be referrals to provincial ministries, including approval of road closure bylaw, and then council adoption. And if the road closure bylaw is not adopted, then the village would not be able, be able to dispose of the road allowances. There would be second and third readings to propose bylaw number twelve ninety-eight. And there could be amendments to that bylaw, including the number of RV sites, seasonal use, storage. Council could conduct a public hearing as part of the process, although the public has already been afforded an opportunity to provide input through development of the OCP and bylaw adoption process in two thousand and twenty-two, and the proposed bylaw is congruent with the OCP. Walkways and pathways along the river would need to be constructed at the expense of the developer. There would need to be a road constructed from the highway to the RV park by the developer at their expense, and the village would need to be satisfied with the developer's indigenous peoples' consultation. There's also five mutual conditions that are, uh, would be in the interest of the developer and the village. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, do you have a supplemental question?
I, I guess I just, I wasn't clear then, is the developer required to get all of those studies and things done by independent third parties?
The Chair, typically the, so the developers already performed, or had these assessments performed by a third party, those who have professional expertise, and they provided them to the village, the village has reviewed them, and would need to provide further scrutiny as part of a condition to finalization of the purchase and sale agreement.
But my understanding was, for instance, that the environmental assessment didn't consider flora or fauna on the site, and that it was done in wintertime. It, it just seems that perhaps. It it just seems that perhaps some of it was inadequate.
Well, I don't know what else to say about that, where they have done one, and um, I don't know whether we accept parameters regarding what the assessment would look like, or if there's a standard for for that type of assessment.
Yeah, through the chair, the consultant that was hired by the developer performed a rather thorough environmental assessment, and I believe they've been retained again to provide further commentary on specific aspects of their assessment that came up at the December seventeenth meeting. And I don't have the environmental assessment in front of me, so I can't comment on fauna, but um, certainly if the village was to proceed with finalizing the agreement. It would need to be, the environmental assessment would need to be to the satisfaction of council.
Thank you.
We'll move on because we've taken fifteen minutes for two questions. So and we, I have, um, three, possibly four. Um, because I had Jay Danley on the list and he's his hand is no longer, no. Raised, so we'll go to Kevin in the room. Well, you can, you're not going to read the whole document.
I'm hoping I get to answer this first one, which is not, which is, what is the there is, can someone please point me the legal prohibition from requirement that prioritizes to the buy or purchase and sale agreement of this land prior to a proponent complying with at least the fundamentals of 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 development that means C O C P. At least of a common fashion that's respects the statements that are laid there and the land use, policies and the waters that have been explained. There, I do not believe there's an answer for that in terms of, but yes, there is no legal requirement that that the purchase and sale of maybe takes place over time. I understand that proponents come forward with plans and council will ask to help make that happen. I get that. And that takes place over a long period of time. But I don't believe there's a legal requirement that stops council from saying that this process cannot go ahead until this or another uh, proponent, whatever it is, comes forward with a proposal that actually looks like it fits with the legal requirements that have been explained by many of the people here and your own documentation. And I also around that question, I'd love to have that question answered. And the second one um, pertains to some of this documentation that's, um, so we're waiting for. Why wouldn't council recognize that there is a burden for council around complying with the, um, um, it's a contamination regulation act regulation. As council owns, as the village owns uh, part of the lands there, they're required to operate uh, as if they are part of the council. And or they can escape on that by an exemption as can the proponent. These are really complicated. Everyone knows you look at it, it's a dog show paperwork, but the reality is the proponent is required to have to answer nothing from the proponent about contamination, how they plan to get it, or how they plan to do it. They're required to have not only to, they are classified as a contaminated site by people through the um, the real site. They are required to either um, address it or at least provide a plan how it would be addressed, and then or get an exemption around that. And in all of those cases, they are required to show paperwork. And I would have seen, I think the town or the village would have seen that happen before. Before, so we know what the process would be. We have faith from a proponent who said they don't seem to care about our water, uh, our lake front protection and have proposed something that could target that. Are they going to do the same with the?
So those are your two questions?
The third one is, is the village, as council aware, do they have a role where they have to actually uh, play in getting documentation for themselves and for the village? As or getting an exemption around that, and it says specifically in the um, act that that has to happen before uh, an area is rezoned. I have a question about.
I'm s- I'm s- I'm sorry. I don't know what the questions are.
You don't pay attention. The question's very clear. Is is there a legal requirement that the land village enter into a buy and sell or purchase and sale agreement before it goes uh, through anything else on the process process? The answer is no. Oh, and then the second question around the contani- contamination process for that. And are you actively acting on behalf of the village interests to look at what the village is required to do as a result of those regulations? And I'm sorry, I just think that.
So you've asked, and you can, to clarify, you have deemed yourself to have answered your first question, so you're.
Well, I'd like to hear the village answer that because I think people in the village would like to be covered.
So is, okay, so, okay, thank you.
We need that to believe that there's no option but for us to go ahead.
So, um, the first one is, is the land sale, the land purchase and sale agreement, the first step? Does it have to be the first step? And then the other two questions revolved around the contaminated sites. Both village responsibility and proponent's responsibility regarding.
Yeah, thanks, Susan. Politician wanted to atone, but I I thought the question's quite clear, you should try it.
Yeah, if 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 you are clear with your question without, you know, because it's really, it's hard when you put a lot of verbiage around it. Because we do unders- we do understand those those things. So if you can be concise, if for future. Yeah, that's why I was worried. So, C A O Baker.
Thank you, Mayor Hewitt. So uh, when it comes to the question, does the purchase and sale agreement has have to be the first step? I don't know that it is the, I don't know that it is the first step, but I can perhaps offer a little bit of history. So um, staff have performed or have consulted with planners and lawyers throughout the process in order to give advice and guidance on how the village should proceed. And so perhaps that, you know, was one of the first steps, getting outside input on how do we proceed? What do we do? Gather information, chat with professionals and ask on how we should proceed. And um, in following their guidance and getting to this point, the purchase and sale agreement seems to be the best mechanism to use that consolidates all of the various different conditions that are part of this proposal. So land sale is part of it. But it's related to the zoning and it's related to um, perhaps an R V park regulation or what can occur. It's related to environmental flood hazards, sewage sewage, archaeological and First Nations consultation. So the purchase and sale agreement is an attempt to consolidate all of that and put it before council. So that the developer and council are on the same page when they start to move forward and start to attempt to meet those conditions. So I wouldn't, again, I wouldn't say that the purchase sale agreement is the first step. It's just the way in which we're consolidating everything. That's the mechanism um, for council to assess the proposal. And the second question regarding contaminated sites. One of the conditions of the purchase and sale agreement is that the developer comply with environmental, the Environmental Management Act Contaminating Sites Regulation. So in order for the sale to be finalized and closed, the village would have to be satisfied that they sufficiently complied with the act.
Can I just do a quick follow up? Article six, the regulations state that the municipal authorities have a role to play that has to take place. And has the municipal, has a duty to undertake and its responsibilities under that act and regulation labeled to the contaminated sites. Or I guess, in other words, what actions does the village take on that? And maybe if they don't get started, that's not right now. In regards to documentation, I'm sure that they would leave us that how the people have other questions. Thanks for your time. Again, I apologize for my intensity on that, but I care a little bit.
All right, so um, being, given that we're running out of time, and I only have two more people who have indicated they want questions, so that that's where we'll end because we'll be uh, out of time. So I've got Tamara.
There we go. Found the unmute button. Thank you so much for uh, hearing my question, Mayor and Council. Um, at the risk of sounding monotonous, what I actually would like to do is repeat my question from the December meeting. Because I feel and that I wrote in a letter to council, because I feel it wasn't addressed really at all. I asked about section three point one zero of the O C P, which specifically addresses climate mitigation and climate adaptation as requirements. And I don't feel that that has been considered in any way. I would like to know how that was considered in the case of looking at this development proposal. And if it wasn't, in what case, I I believe Mayor Hewitt, with full respect and attempting to answer my question last time, you said something of the to the effect of, well, we can't really take that into consideration in every circumstance. And perhaps I misunderstood, but that's how it sounded to me. And so I would like to know what circumstance you would take that into uh, account? Or in what way that is actually meaningful that it's included in the O C P at all? If we don't consider it, when we're looking at something that potentially has both a high climate footprint and does not at all take into account adaptation considerations, such as those that Bill Wells was specifically pointing out in terms of the probability of floods in this area. Thank you.
So I apologize if I may have sounded flippant at the last meeting. It was not intended. And I can only think that I was responding to at this point in this stage, that in the environmental considerations were not part of what we were doing, because we were talking about the the purchase and sale agreement, not not the actual development itself. Um, but uh, Neil Baker?
Thank you, Mayor Hewitt. Um, I missed the call today. Tamara, thank you, Tamara. So with respect to the O C P section three point one zero, it influences this proposal in a couple of ways. One is um, it would have been taken into consideration throughout the O C P. So the impacts of climate um, influence all of the O C P in its entirety. When it comes to this specific proposal, when it comes to the environmental assessment, flood hazard assessment and sewage dispersal, all of that would have taken into consideration the O C P, and in particular, section three point ten with respect to climate change.
And yet, was there any actual assessment or discussion of the climate impact or the climate adaptation appropriateness? Anywhere in any of the materials that went that came before council or went back and forth between council and the developer? Because to say it would have been considered doesn't really address whether it actually was or how.
Through the chair, I would need to pull up each assessment and find the specific points in which section three point ten were considered, but I don't have um, the ability to bring that out in the next two, three minutes and provide the answer.
Thank you.
All right, and Barry. Barry, did you have a question? I see you've unmuted, so, um, and if we can't hear you. All right, so, well, I see that Karen has her hand up. We'll go to Karen and then if uh, you can get your computer working, Barry, we'll take your question as well. So Karen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I I don't hear council expressing any uh, consideration that of the much repeated comments by the public, re the O C P seeming to disallow what you're considering to do or what the the developer wants to do. So that's my question.
The O C P is is always going to be part of our consideration. Um, maybe we're not specifically referencing it, but that is implicit in all of the the negotiations and each step that we take. If we go further in the process, it's considered. Um, Neil Baker, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor Hewitt. Um, perhaps just to clarify, you know, one of the purposes of this meeting is for council to receive delegations, more information, answer questions from the public. And um, at today, anyway, council hasn't discussed the O C P and um, how it relates to this proposal. Council hasn't received a legal opinion. And so it's, from from at least my perspective, I don't think there's been an opportunity yet during this meeting to um, for you to hear a discussion on it. So you're right, it hasn't happened, and it hasn't happened because council's receiving information today. And further, uh, legal opinion is needed in order to determine how to proceed.
Thank you.
We'll try one more time to see if, uh, Barry, if you've gotten your sound working. All right, um, so I am not. Yeah, Council Brown, it's, are you responding to a question or, because it's typically either myself or the C A O who responds to questions during question period?
I will.
Your discussion would typically be during council discussions?
Will we have an opportunity to discuss while um, the delegation is still here, while public? Or will that be in camera discussion?
Um, we will only discuss in camera items in in camera. Um, we could, we, the agenda item is on tomorrow's agenda as well. So if you could have framed it as a question to one of the the delegates at the time that we were discussing it, I will allow it, but please, um, bear in mind your role. You could have, yeah, it would have been best to frame it as a question to one of the delegates if it's related to that.
Um, so this question isn't necessarily to the delegates as much as it is to the C A O and the council. Um, so if that's permitted through the chair. Um, and if I understand correctly from what I'm hearing from the public, my question would be, is there a version of this process that would put the sale after looking at the entire project that's proposed holistically? As opposed to looking at it piecemeal in pieces and approving one piece that may then be affected, affect other things down the line? Is there a timeline that would allow the sale to come after perhaps a development variance permit conversation? Or anything else that would allow us to look at this project in a more holistic manner? But I have concerns about trying to look at a land sale before we look at all of the other aspects. I keep hearing from staff um, that there, we're focused right now on this specific thing at the exclusion of other things at this moment. And that seems to me to be. And that seems to me to be in the face of having a, a whole idea and understanding of what this is, uh, is being asked of us. So my question would be, is there a timeline that would allow the sale or, um, land transfer to be in a different order sequentially to allow us to consider all of the different aspects of this without doing one in isolation, uh, from the others?
So what I'm going to say is we have it on tomorrow's agenda and I've had discussions with the CAO which were discussing some of those very things, which is the appropriate time for it to come up when, as it, as, uh, CAO Baker indicated, this was for us to receive information which we will then could inform our discussions at tomorrow night's, uh, council meeting. So, um, those, those are the kinds of points that we raise, that we could take motions on at a regular council meeting. We're not making motions tonight. So please bring that conversation back to the table tomorrow night when we're discussing the item. All right, um, thank you all for your attendance and your questions and, um, so I, I, I've actually got three more people and we've gone over, over time. I've extended it to thirty minutes and allowed, we've gone thirty-five. Over thirty-five. So, um, we are meeting again tomorrow night, um. So, because we could, you know, yeah, I've got three more people who have, want questions. We, this is a, is a council meeting and there are guidelines set out and I've already, yeah, we've extended meeting time by.
So we can have a question tomorrow night?
We definitely can. Yeah, there's a question period at every council meeting. All right, thanks, everyone. So, like, uh, so the motion is that the, uh, in accordance, well, all of it, give you a chance to leave the room. And, uh,
We're going to take a recess in a minute. Can we just do the motion to close and then?
Okay, so that the, uh, that in accordance with section ninety-one A, part of the council meeting may be closed to the public. If the subject matter be, being considered relates to one or more of the following. He, the acquisition disposition or expropriation of land or improvements, if the council considers that disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality and that persons other than council members and municipal officers be excluded from the meeting. Right, move by Counselor B, second by Councilman Lee. Any discussion? All those in favor? So we are now in recess.